Good morning. Happy Friday. My name is Gracie Semeninger and I am the president of Downtown Council. For those of you that are brand new to us this morning, I'll give you a brief overview of who we are and what we're doing here. The Downtown Council is one of 10 Chamber Councils. And simply put Downtown Council cares about the future of our city. We represent Jacksonville's downtown business community, including major corporations, growing businesses, and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that downtown and greater Jacksonville will thrive and prosper. We also pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top-tier speakers to our meetings. And tonight, today is simply no different. We typically meet on the first and third Friday of every month from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. at the old San Andreas Church in downtown Jacksonville. And breakfast is provided by Breadboard and coffee from Martin Coffee. Due to COVID-19, we have been conducting our meetings via Zoom since March. And in addition, our annual signature event is Painting of the Paw Springs, which is repainting all of the paws along Bay Street in downtown Jacksonville. Without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Tuttle, who is going to recognize our new members from last month. Brian? I also have the list, so Brian, if you don't have it readily available.
All right, guys.
Okay, no worries. So I want to just recognize our new members from last month. If you are a new member or maybe a returning member under a different organization, will you please give us a nice wave since we're on Zoom today? Kimberly Waterhouse, Melissa Bolton, Alex Guel, David Garfunkel, Spencer Hyatt, and Anne Marie Knight. Thank you so much for joining us. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ben Johnson, who also is our Downtown Council Small Business Leader of the Year for this year, in addition to the overall Chamber Small Business Leader of the Year. So we're very excited to have, you know, this incredible word. So Ben, who do we have joining us today?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Thank you, Gracie. Yeah, I won't take up too much time, but I want to just reiterate what the Small Business Leader of the Year is. Every council nominates one person to represent their council. And today, we are very fortunate to have the Jacksonville Beach Council, Beaches Council, and their SBLY for 2020. Let me introduce Greg DeFranza. He is a, one of the things I think about our Small Business Leader of the Year 2020 class is that it's so unique and dynamic. And Greg is the epitome of that. So I'm going to tell you briefly about him. And he's quite an amazing guy. He worked for the Sheriff's Office for 20 years. He's a head instructor, a judo instructor. He does photography. But his main reason why he was an SBLY is that he created the Camp Canine at Jack's Beach. And he'll tell you all about that. And also, like I said, I don't want to take much time, but when I mentioned he was a judo instructor, he's a judo world champion. So it's quite amazing. We have just a cool, cool, cool group of 2020. And if you're ever in a dark alley, I want to be with Greg. I would love to read his whole bio on just his judo, but this is not just all of his awards and accolades that he's received in just judo around the world. So without further ado, I'll let Greg tell you more about himself and about Camp Canine.
Good morning, everybody. I am, as Ben said, and thank you very much for that intro. I am the owner and operator of Camp Canine at Jack's Beach. So what I do is canine behavioral training. I don't do it just regionally. I just happen to be living in Jacksonville Beach at the time when I invented the title for the company. I do travel nationwide to do this. I just got back from a week-long kind of tour up the East Coast, all the way to DC, working with clients up there. And so what I do is I basically give you a better form of communication. Oftentimes with our dogs, we try to communicate and so-called teach, and I'll explain that in a second, in a human way. But canines are not human. And so it's basically destined to fail if that's the case. Canine communication is actually much less complicated than human communication. And so it's a different language, but it's not a language that's foreign to us. We just don't use it very often. Since the animals are instinctual, we don't use the instinctual side of us. And that's where that incongruity comes from. And when I say that they are very simple in their communication, it's very clear. And it's like us when we have subordinates in our organizations or we are dealing with clients or customers. If you're not communicating clearly, then they don't know, number one, what to do, or number two, what it is you would like to do moving forward. And so when we do this with our dogs, we get that better communication. Dogs are great followers, but if we don't plug into that by being a better leader, then they're a ship without a rudder. And so that's what I basically do. I work with all dogs, all ages, all issues, from puppies all the way through human aggression. And my take on this has always been the dogs have way too much tension frustration in their brains. And if we can help them with that and stop giving affection, affection, affection all of the time, but give rules and boundaries and limitations because that's who they are, then they're more clear about how they can move forward, how they can, you know, help us be part of our pack. And that's the important thing because at that point, then you can continue having your relationship with your dog. You're more comfortable, you're more confident, it's happier for everybody, it's way less frustrating. And then you continue to keep that going. Like you see behind me, although this is an older picture, these are my two guys. They're both Burdesean Ridgebacks. That was at one of the Jumbo Shrimp Games where the crustaceans and canines night that they had. But once again, I've used this with my guys. The one on the right, as you're looking at it, that's Koa. He's almost 11. My other guy is almost four now. And I use them sometimes because they are, you know, very instinctual as well. Sometimes use them on cases where the dogs need to be just more comfortable being around other pack members, so to speak. And so, you know, we don't work against what God and Mother Nature have created for us. We work with that. And that goes for our business lives too. So I've been very fortunate to be the SBLY from the Beaches Division. My wife was an SBLY from the Beaches several years ago. And it's been a lot of fun, it's been a lot of different this year, that's for sure. Because we haven't been able to be face-to-face. But I really appreciate the fact that the Chamber is as supportive of their members as they are. And I really appreciate you guys having me here this morning.
Thank you so much, Greg. Like I said, if anyone needs any information or would like to, if you have a troubled dog or you feel like you need to control your pack at home, I sent Greg's website information on the notes section down below. So, and then I'm.
Hey, Ben. Just wanted to interject. I had a new puppy that I could not get to walk. And he had him walking, he had her walking, excuse me, within minutes. It was amazing. So I learned a lot and I highly recommend it if you want some help with your furry friends.
Terry, give your puppy a hug for me.
I will. Thank you.
That's awesome. Well, I'm going to turn it over to Laura Edgcombe to announce our next speaker.
Good morning, everybody. Happy Friday. Sorry, I was looking at the website because we're getting a new puppy on Sunday. So I'm like, oh, wait, I need to call.
Oh, yay.
So I literally just pulled up here before it gets lost in the chat. Anyway, so first of all, good morning, everybody. I want to, real quickly before I go into our speaker, remind everyone that this Zoom call is being recorded and will be put on our YouTube channel within a week or two. But just so that everyone knows, I have to like let you know that we're being recorded. The other thing I want to let you know is the way that this works is we'll have our speaker and then afterward, we'll have a Q and A session, at which point we will be moderating, I'll be moderating based off the questions that are put in the chat box. So please, if you have questions, put them in the chat box. You can do it out publicly for everyone to see. Or if you don't want everyone to see your question or know that it's from you, you're welcome to send it privately to either myself, Grace, or Gracie. And we'll make sure that it gets out there. And then if we run short on time, we also will put the questions together in a document and send them to our speaker and then I can answer them on the backside. But with that, I'm going to go ahead and get started today. I'm excited today. Our speaker is Nancy Powell. She is with Scenic Jacksonville, which she's the new executive director for them. They are, I'm not sure, I had to look up Scenic Jacksonville and I knew that it was new, but I hadn't really wrapped my brain around what they were doing. Technically, they are a nonprofit organization dedicated to preserving, protecting, and enhancing the scenic character of Jacksonville. You know, right now, you know, we are living in a time when so many people have tried for so long. There's tons of good organizations and they've actually partnered together with Scenic Jacksonville, Riverkeeper, Garden Cloud. There's a couple of other ones for a particular project that is focusing specifically on the riverfront, the riverfront parks. And that particular project is called Riverfront Parks Now. And Nancy, as well as Jimmy Orth from Riverkeeper, are actually joining us today. And they're going to speak on this particular initiative, where they've been, where they are going, how we can get involved, how we can help. It makes me really excited to actually introduce Nancy today. She was the board chair for Riverside Abundale Preservation for the last two years. And so she was a big part of the neighborhood when we were, you know, coming together with the Lomax Project and coming together with Memorial Park and Riverside Park. And just there's a whole lot of initiatives and a lot of do-gooding that was done in the last two years while Nancy was board chair. So that's really exciting. And she's also, she sits on the board with Jacksonville Symphony Orchestra. So she is, she's just like us, like she's very, very, very involved in trying to keep Jacksonville moving forward and very much speaks to what our mission as Downtown Council is. And so it makes me really excited to have her today. And I have to real quickly give some love to Mr. Larson because he is the one who suggested that she speak today. And it was, it was great. So to that, you know, I tell you that if anyone has an idea of a speaker, please feel free to email me and let me know your ideas. Tom, I appreciate you immensely for recommending her. And then also later on during the Q and A session, Tom, I'd love it if you'd be a part of our chat because you've got a lot to give. Anyway, with that to say, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Nancy and let her share their vision with us. Nancy?
Okay, well, I'm gonna, you know, give a presentation this morning. And we are so excited to talk to the Downtown Council. The downtown businesses, we feel our initiative is aligned with your goals. And we want to support downtown as much as possible. And I want to thank Tom Larson, who is on the board of Scenic Jacksonville. He's also with the Sierra Club and the Sierra Club has been, has joined in on our efforts as well. We also have here Susan Caven, who is the president of Scenic Jacksonville. She's the president of the board. And so she can also help answer questions as well. And Jimmy Orth, of course, we've been doing a tag team on this to many different organizations. So I'm going to get started here. Let me just change the format here. Make sure you can see. All right, can everybody see that? So Riverfront Parks Now, great cities have great parks and great river cities have great river parks. So we are, who we are is a civic group of organizations. We are currently the nonprofit organizations, although we are inclusive, we are looking for others to join in on our effort. This is not in any way an exclusive list, although these are the organizations who have formally said, yes, we want to support this. And we represent thousands of people in the city right now. So Scenic Jacksonville, of course, the Late Bloomers Garden Club has had downtown, the greening and beautification of downtown for many, many years. And Barbara Ketchum has been very active in that. And she's actually the chair of our steering committee for the Riverfront Parks Now. Garden Club of Jacksonville, the St. John's Riverkeeper, Greenscape, Sierra Club, Memorial Park Association, and we just added the Jackson Urban League. So if the Downtown Council wants to join us, we would love to have you. So we started this effort, really, we started it in December and January of last year around the Resiliency Committee that Councilman Carlucci had started. And there is a group of nonprofits that have come together called, it's now called Resilient Jax, and that's headed up by Shannon Blankenship of the Riverkeeper. So that's a group of nonprofit organizations that have come together to support the resiliency efforts that there is, there's a lot of committee work being done right now. Councilmember DeFor runs it, took it over from Councilman Carlucci. And there's several of you are probably familiar with it or participating in these meetings. But we started looking at the resiliency of downtown. And we, early on, started meeting after these meetings. Scenic Jacksonville, Late Bloomers Club, we've been also very concerned and wanting to make the downtown more vibrant, more beautiful. Scenic Jacksonville, by the way, is the originator of the tree ordinance back in 2000. So the Tree Fund that we have now to replace trees is a result of our founder, Bill Britton, our late founder, as well as the sign ordinance is another one that we have, that we were originating. And these were back, you know, 20 years ago, but the city has benefited from those. So we looked at the downtown area. And this is a, you know, we started with a DIA map and we've recreated it here. But what you're looking at is all the publicly owned properties in downtown. Okay, so, you know, starting with the Riverwalk, you've got the Riverwalk and you've got Sidney Geffen Park over here. I don't know if you can see my cursor over, you know, in Brooklyn. And then, of course, we've got the Landing. So a lot has changed in the past three years, two years, since other plans had been done about downtown. The Landing was torn down. The number four here is the Landing's parking lot. We've got the Courthouse property, which is under contract or it's got, it's under an invitation to negotiate with a developer right now, but there's nothing yet that's. On that. And then, of course, number six area here is the Shipyards property, which has been vacant since 1992. Three or four developers have had designs on this property. And up until June of this year, it was under contract to Iguana, but that expired on June 30th. So the city, there are these properties. And number seven is Metropolitan Park, which, as you know, has been neglected for many years. The last plan to revitalize it was under Mayor Peyton's organization in 2009. There were some good plans. They got derailed by the recession. And, and so, but when you look at it today, over 50% of the land is publicly owned on the North Bank. When you look at the South Bank, the South Bank is more private. There's the Riverwalk. And if you, you all know very well that the Riverwalk had to be built into the river because the private property goes up until the river. And so they are extending this over to the Fuller Warren, which will connect into the bike pad path, which is going to be great. And then the public property is Friendship Fountain and the Mosh Museum. Next door to it is River City Brewing, which technically is city-owned land, but they have a 99-year private lease on it. And of course, the district is, has been privatized and may be developed. So we looked at this and we said, you know, the nine, when you look at the whole St. John's River, you know, all in the county, about 90% of that is privately owned. But here we have an opportunity right in front of us. And, hold on a second. Oh, and so our opportunity, what we see is for an iconic riverfront for all, to provide a gathering place for the community and all of the social and health benefits that come along. And of course, now with COVID, you're seeing the emphasis on outdoor public space that is so important to cities. But beyond that, it's multiple benefits. And this is what we see about our initiative is that we see, and we have data from many other cities that we're going to talk about, that stimulates surrounding economic development. It is not an either or. It's not, we're going to do a park or we're going to develop. You can do both. And you all know for sure that the city of Jacksonville has plenty of available empty space to do infill development. And then the third piece, which is so important, is to create a more resilient riverfront, to provide a buffer from sea level rise, river rising, flooding. And we see this now that the parks in other cities are really planning for this and doing really creative things. So our guiding principles, this is a picture, as you see, of the current Metropolitan Park. It's a recent drone shot and the Heart Bridge is down. So you can see the Lot J and the Daleys Place. But, you know, Metropolitan Park has these mature trees that were planted thanks to Greenscape and other people who went before us. It's got some marina here. It has bones. But back to our guiding principles, we want this to be an inclusive effort to involve the public in a shared vision. And that is a really important part of our efforts. What we've seen happen in a lot of cases is kind of this piecemeal approach. And something happening, you know, somebody makes a decision and presents it and says, here, do you want this? And we feel that there's an opportunity now for a shared planning effort, strategic planning effort. If you saw the paper yesterday, the Times Union advocated for that. So, and then to use the riverfront public space as a catalyst for economic development. Finally, commitments for ongoing improvements and maintenance. We totally recognize that that has not been our strong suit and it's time to change that. So here's another view of the same North Bank Riverwalk. And the reason why the riverfront, the reason why we're focusing here is really because this is where the most available public space is. Most cities, when they want to do a riverfront park or a series of parks, it's not just one park, most cities have to go purchase the land because they don't have enough. In fact, I was just studying Denver and Denver's Master Parks Plan. They don't have enough public space to expand their park system. So they would have to go purchase it. We don't have to do that. Over here in Corkscrew Park, it's a wonderful little park that was revitalized recently. And so, you know, as you can see, here is a large swath of land, which can be an extensive public green space and active parks. And what we're seeing in other cities is it's, again, it's not just one park. It's a series of parks and it's a vision that holistically takes advantage of the riverfront and connects it to all the downtown perpendicularly, you know, I don't know if that's a word. You know, connects it to the downtown active centers, cultural activities, businesses, et cetera. So we're going to talk through a series of different parks. And what we've seen is that it's so many cities have figured this out, so we can do it also. Starting with Chicago, Grant Park, I grew up in Chicago. I can't help but start with Chicago. Grant Park is one of the phenomenal examples of public space in the world, really. This, they consider it the front lawn of the city. It's a connected series of civic spaces. There's parks within parks here. This is not just one park. And it's in a constant state of change and renewal. Grant Park was not always like this. It was envisioned, you know, back in the day by the Olmsted and laid out. Buckingham Fountain has been here for a long time, but Grant Park was not always in the state that it is in today. I'm sure most of you have visited here. You've got the Millennial Park in the corner here, which was a cornerstone of that revitalization. Pritzker Pavilion is where the orchestra plays. Maggie Daley Park is this large swath of a park for kids area. It's got so many interesting things to it. And what's also significant south of here is the museum campuses. So the Field Museum, the Aquarium, the Planetarium, also Soldier Field. And they continue to build it farther south. So this is connected to 18 miles of lakefront trails and beaches and parks. So public space all along the lakefront. You can get on your bike and ride for 15 miles up and down the lake. But beyond that, in the past decade, they started with a transportation grant to build the Chicago Riverwalk. Now, the Chicago Riverwalk is Whacker Drive, which is an underneath, underground transportation system, which was dark and dingy and nothing. And they took this transportation grant and they have built this Riverwalk phase by phase, block by block. It's not all built at one time. And it connects to the Lakefront Trail and it connects to Grant Park. But each block takes on a different theme and has different amenities. And that's another theme that we see is that these parks have different areas within them that appeal to different kinds of people. What you're looking at here is what they call the jetty section, which is a series of floating wetlands. And it's a place for people to learn about the ecology of the river. So Chicago's a great example, but then you say to yourself, okay, well, we're not Chicago. What about other cities? Well, let's take a look. Detroit is, here is a 22-acre revitalization. It used to be called the West River, Riverfront Park. It's been renamed. Ralph C. Wilson is a benefactor here. And he is, he has donated $50 million to revitalize this park. But this is one of many transformational efforts in Detroit, including the Joe Louis Greenway, the Riverwalk, the Iron Bell Trail. And as you hear these trails that are connected to the parks, of course, we think about Emerald Trail. We'll talk about that in a little bit later. This is being designed by Van Valkenburg Association Associates, who is one of the ones we see that has done many of these major parks in other cities. Louisville. Louisville is 85 acres. This was designed by Hargraves, another firm you see a lot that has done Chattanooga and other places. But they have found it so successful that they're adding 22 more acres to this park. And it is a beautiful park on the riverfront. And on the other side of the river is Cumberland Park, which is in Indiana. And Cumberland Park is being built for resiliency. It's hundreds of acres. And what they're looking at is a regional connection across the river between two states, but they expect it to be a major destination, regional attraction. And here's another view of the Louisville Waterfront Park. It's another part of this park. Of course, it's a big gathering space for events and other areas. And you can see in the background, the Yum Center. So the stadium and the city is right across from what looks like our Heart Bridge, which they still have, but, you know, and a little, you know, cove here for boats and things like that. Memphis, Tennessee is another mid-sized city that has decided to make a major investment in their riverfront. Their vision is for connected, catalytic, and fun riverfront. It's 30 acres. It's designed in four distinct zones. They have Memphis and May, so they needed an area for a large gathering. But they also have like a tree walk where you can go through and walk up into the trees. And they also have, they've also decided here, you know, if you've been to Memphis, you know that there's Mud Island, which is another park into the Mississippi River. But they decided that they wanted this to be close to the center of the city. You can see the National Civil Rights Museum here. And so the connectivity to the downtown core is another key theme. Brooklyn Bridge has an adaptive reuse of their peers, their old shipping peers. And each of these peers has different theme. You can see there's soccer fields on one and other aspects on the others. It's total, this park, including the side here. You can see the Linear Park along the highway here is 85 acres. And this was built with this development here, which is contributing through development fees to the maintenance of the park. And while it's only on 10% of the land. So again, a good example of how development and parks can coexist and complement each other. Columbus, Ohio, another mid-sized city. This was opened in 2011. Their river, and a lot of these places, their rivers are not that great. They, it's not such a great river. They did a lot of engineering work to open up the river to make it flow more. It used to be more of a stagnant river. And it was a previously neglected asset. So this park was a $44 million investment. It was 50% public, 50% private. And we'll talk a little bit more about funding. They also, when they raised the money, they established an endowment for maintenance. So another consideration for how you, how you, you know, make sure that you can maintain these parks. On the left side here, you can see this is the National Veterans Museum on the other side of the river. And on the right side here is two amenities. One is a bicentennial park. Actually, this is both a bicentennial park, which has a splash pad, which is very active, as well as kind of a gathering. active, as well as kind of a gathering space with the covered pavilion for, for gatherings. Smalley Riverfront Park in Cincinnati is a very good example of something that's similar to, to Jacksonville. We, we've seen a lot of similarities. So this is a 32 acre park. And of course, it's got the bridge here and a roadway. It's been built for resiliency. It was actually designed to flood and to be able to move things and have electrical in areas. You know, this actually is built on a lower tier and then an upper tier. And when you look at it from an aerial view, you can see the similarities. They not, they don't just have one stadium on their riverfront, but they have two. And in between it is this major development called the banks. And so this was, this is integrated into, but even across the road. So the development is up away from the river and it's up a little higher. And even across the road, there's still park space and, and public space integrated into this. So this is a very creative park. It's, it's really, this is one picture of one of the public spaces on the park as well as the River Walk. Everybody is planning, even Ohio, they plan for shade and enjoyment. And here is a kids area that, you know, again, we have problems sometimes with fountains, but they, they know that water features are very attractive to families. And here's an example of when they were building it, how it flooded up, up through this road. But you can see the development was protected, the stadiums were protected. And it, so when they were designing this, they had all of those in mind. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jimmy, who's going to talk a little bit more about how these parks are being created for resiliency.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for having me. First of all, as you've seen, I think what, what really struck us when we were doing all this research on parks and, and it was, it was one of those, it was actually kind of fun, but it was like almost going down a rabbit hole because there's so many wonderful parks to research. And we just kept getting more and more excited, the more we learned about what these communities throughout the country, really actually throughout the world are doing to revitalize waterfronts. And one of the things that really struck us is these co-benefits. As you've seen today, they provide benefits in terms of health and wellness, civic engagement, recreation, access to waterways, which is so important, and of course, economic development. But cities are also now looking to parks to help resolve problems with flooding and mitigate the impacts of climate change. And this park's an example. And when Hurricane Sandy devastated New York City, they really recognized how vulnerable the city is. So they started reimagining how the waterfront could help protect the city from sea level rise and climate change and provide and be a benefit in terms of resiliency. So this is a park that Hunter's Point, this section of the park's about 11 acres. It's an old industrial site that now more closely resembles the floodplain marshes that once existed here. This was an, the, the park created on this post-industrial waterfront site is now an 11 acre model of urban ecology and resiliency. Bulkheads were removed. They actually recreated wetlands that were once there a long time ago. And a bioswale was incorporated into the site to manage and treat stormwater. And they're actually doing these type of projects throughout, throughout New York City. The Brooklyn Park that you just saw, Brooklyn Bridge Park that you just saw, they actually have recreated wetlands on, on a portion of that. And they're doing this at numerous parks throughout the city to help enhance the resiliency of New York, of New York. Boston and New York are probably the two that are looking at it the most comprehensively. In Boston, they've developed a plan called Resilient Boston Harbor. And they have essentially looked at all of their waterfront and they're looking to natural infrastructure. So, and what they've done is they're actually planning to redesign waterfront parks, restore marshes, and even retreat from the shoreline in some cases to create flood protection, buffer some storm surge and improve access and recreation. And this is happening throughout the city. And it's really exciting because it's also providing more access for people to access the waterfront, but also it's helping to prevent flooding in, from future storms. This is just another example of one of the close-up of one of the areas within the Boston wharf where you can see they've, they're incorporating green infrastructure, but they're also building to withstand flooding as well. So all these buildings that you see here along the waterfront are built to, at higher elevation, built to flood at, at the low flood, at the floor level. And so, and then the natural infrastructure can help absorb some of that, that stormwater and some of those floodwaters. One other feature that we're seeing or strategy that parks, that cities are using is that they're incorporating the use of underground cisterns to capture stormwater. The, the cistern at this park, Cumberland Park in Nashville, it actually captures about a million gallons of stormwater a year. And I always think this is such a cool part because you would never know that this park is providing flood mitigation benefits for the surrounding area. And it's such a wonderful park. I've been there before. It's really cool. And actually, when I, when I first went to this park, I had no idea that there was a cistern underneath the park. And so this is a feature that some cities throughout the country are looking at. Also, I have to mention this park and the adjacent park that's right next to their stadium. Since those two parks have been built, there's been about a billion dollars in, in private investment within just two, two blocks of those park boundaries. This is a really cool park too. This is in Chattanooga. I always love to talk about Chattanooga. I was involved with an effort in Jacksonville in 2005, where, when JCCI was still in existence. And they did a study of Jacksonville's river. It was called the River Dance Study. And one of the things that we did is we, we looked at other cities, what they're doing to revitalize their waterfronts. And Chattanooga is kind of the poster child for this because they started a long time ago, about 30 years ago. They engaged in an extensive public engagement process and had the public involved in developing a shared vision. I always love to talk about Chattanooga, not because they've been doing it for so long, but because of what they once were. They actually, in the late 60s and 70s, they had the worst air quality in the entire nation. It was one of the most polluted cities in the United States. And they realized, we have to reimagine our city. We have to do something differently. So they looked at the riverfront. And they've done such an amazing job of successfully revitalizing the riverfront, which has also revitalized their downtown and has stimulated significant economic growth. This, and of course, as you can see from that picture, they've, they've really incorporated a lot of green space and prioritized public access along the waterfront. This particular park is an old industrial site that was contaminated, a brown field. They cleaned it up. They actually created wetland, a wetland system, which you can see there. That actually helps to, to retain stormwater as it flows off of the impervious surfaces in downtown, cleanses that water, treats it before it's discharged into the river, but also it helps to alleviate flooding. This park was, was built to withstand 100-year flood. And we also saw earlier, by the way, that, you know, Smale Park in Cincinnati was, you saw how it was designed to flood. Well, this is also something that cities are looking to now, is they're actually recognizing that we have to work with nature and not try to work against it, that it's really hard to hold back floodwaters. So this park in particular was, they expanded the capacity of this, what once was essentially a ditch, so that it could hold more floodwaters and help prevent flooding in adjacent areas where there's more heavily, heavily development and, and residential areas. And then also it can provide recreational benefits. So when this park was designed, everything in the park was designed to be, to be flooded. So in other words, once the part, once there is flooding in the park, as Nancy will show you on the next slide, all of the infrastructure is designed to stay in place so that when these waters recede, they can actually just clean it up and it's ready to be used again for recreational purposes, including the building you see there. That was designed to flood as well.
Thanks, Jimmy. So we're going to come back to Florida. So Tampa and St. Petersburg are two, I'm sure most of you all have, have visited those part, those cities. And Tampa, this is Curtis Hickson Waterfront Park. It's an eight acre park right next to their Performing Arts Center. So it's a, this is an older park. It is used a lot for special events and attracting people along the 2.4 mile Tampa River Walk. And one of the things that Tampa has done, and actually it was in the paper last week, is they just got a, a build grant to expand their River Walk 22 miles throughout the city. And so what they've done is they've extended theirs. Where we stopped at the Hyatt, we never extended ours down to Metropolitan Park. They've extended it all the way down. Here's an example of, of the River Walk. They have a food truck here. This is right in front of the Performing Arts Center. They have creative use of, you know, shade and benches. And so it's a very attractive River Walk. They've invested in it and they brought it all the way down to Armature Works. Now, this is a private entity here, but it's at the end of the River Walk and it wouldn't be here if the River Walk hadn't been extended. And there's a public park back here also. But it's a very vibrant food hall type thing, which has a lot of, it's, it's open to all. And so when we think of commercial interests and the riverfront for all, you know, these types of things can be, can be seen together, but we also want, we want to make sure that it's accessible to all people. Here's another park in Tampa, the Julian Lane Park. So it's basically right across the river from the Curtis Hickson Park. It's just a 25 acre park. It just reopened in 2018. And when they went back to the community, so community gathering and input is a key part of all of these projects. You know, what does this community want for your riverfront? And we would of course ask the same thing for Jacksonville. But what this community on the west side of the river said is, we want an active park. And in park per lance, that means ballfields, tennis courts, soccer fields. So this park, you don't see them on this, is a very active park. Here's a gathering space in the middle of it, as well as what you're looking at is a performance boathouse. So there's crew, there's paddle boarding, there's a place to have kayak launches. There are, is a place to learn within this cove. So this is a floating dock. And so you can learn and not be in the river and have the river currents. So it's been an award-winning design and very successful. And again, the Tampa River Walk is extending on from here. Here's another view of it. It's got public art integrated into the, into the park, as well as this boathouse can be rented out for special events. My daughter who lives there says it's a popular place for weddings because it's built that beautifully. It has a sloped roof, so the rain, so the, the water comes off and goes into a rain garden. So again, built for, you know, with, with resiliency in mind. Then you go down to St. Petersburg. The St. Petersburg Pier was just reopened. This is a historic pier. It's been there 100 years. It's been, been rebuilt three times. This is the latest inter-iteration. It was a $92 million investment that the city of St. Petersburg did. And what, what struck, what strikes us about St. Petersburg is that they have a master plan that was produced in 2015, where they have seven, six waterfront districts. And the pier district is one of those six, but they have a plan for each of those that have major public space and how to take advantage of the, of the, their waterfront. They expect that this pier district, and again, it's 26 acres, so this is a pier park. It's not just a, it's not just the pier. But they expect it to have an $80 million annual economic impact. Here's another picture of the resiliency of native landscaping. This is a section of the pier, as well as, this is the, on the left here is the restaurant at the end of the pier. It's a three-story restaurant and bar, as well as a discovery center here. So it's like a mini museum that allows people to learn on the river or on the waterfront. And then they have this major piece of public art, which during the daytime and at nighttime is an experiential piece of art, which is very impressive and, and very distinctive. And this was, this was funded privately, the piece of art, Janet Eichmann sculpture. But the rest of the pier was mostly publicly funded. So we're going to talk a little bit more about the economics in a, in a minute. But we look at the Emerald Trail and the opportunities that that provides for downtown. It's going to provide people to get on a bike or a walk or run and, and be able to explore the downtown. And if there's a public space downtown with a bike share, you can get on a bike and go up to Springfield or the East Side or to La Villa. And the, the quality of the park, you guys must have seen the Lift Every Voice and Sing announcement, very exciting. They engaged a top-tier park designer to do that, Walter Wood, and to really understand the history of that, of that park. So that is a good example of what we can do and we can do more of it. But enhancing connectivity as well, you know, we've got the, the path across the Fuller Warren that is coming. We also feel like there's opportunity here on the other side with the district and crossover, whether it's water taxis or a pedestrian bridge or other types of solutions to really connect both sides of the river. And we also wanted to recognize that the, you know, the AIA, the Architectural Group, the American Internet, I don't know what their name is, the AIA group, they, you know, several years ago, did a plan around connectivity. And so they came up with, and this is integrated right now into, you know, the Downtown Investment Authority's plans, is to, to really look at, you know, a five-minute walk between places and have some kind of cultural or something to do or something interesting at different parts. And of course, it goes all the way down. You see the stadium here, but you know, the, the waterfront, the working waterfront is what they, they call this industrial section. That's not gonna, you know, that's going to be a future area for, for opportunity. And so when we look at the empty space that is Metropolitan Park, the shipyards, all the way down, we feel like there is a, an opportunity for a, a master plan or holistic view to really think through this before it gets piecemealed out to different developers or different, different things that, that maybe wouldn't be connected if you had thought about it differently. Here's one view of what it could look like. There's lots of parked, this is, you know, we're not designing the park right now. So we wanted to just, you know, do something that shows the opportunity of, of that property. Quickly, I'm going to talk about economics. They, all these cities have, have found that these, and I hope you've seen throughout that, that the, the economic return on the investment is from the surround, is from the activities, from people attracting downtown, from visitors, from more restaurants and retails. And I know you guys would, whoops, hold on a second, you know, are looking for more people to stay downtown longer, something to do. And so the return is between 1.8 and 1.40. The St. Petersburg plan assumed a 1.8, meaning for every dollar that you invest, $8 comes back to the city in, in return. As far as cost goes, very few of these cities have private, is privately funded in total or publicly funded in total. A few of them are. St. Petersburg is mostly public. Tulsa, Oklahoma, which is doing an amazing, amazing 400 acre park, has a major benefactor that is funding their park. But most of them have a combination of public-private. It's 37, 40, 60, 50, 50. There is, and within the public and the private sources, there's a number of different sources that you can pull from and that they do pull from. So grants, transportation grants have been, or river grants or resiliency grants. We are doing a little bit more deeper dive on the specific ones that we could access. But you know, Metropolitan Park was, was created with a grant from the Land and Water Wildlife Foundation. And so grants are available. The Downtown Investment Authority, we have tax increment districts. We have one where the taxes come back to that area. But right now, we've got these parking garages that are a drain on that, but you know, hopefully, you know, there is opportunity in the future for that. Also, park operations can help with, you know, usually maintenance and ongoing things. It's not usually a huge source, but it can be one of the many sources. And then from the private side, developer fees, private philanthropy, corporate support. And then from a, you know, a governance perspective, what we see is that a lot of these cities, Detroit is one, Chattanooga is another one, they have conservancies that are dedicated to their downtown parks, meaning it's a private partner, public partnership to actually, you know, work on the ongoing maintenance and upkeep. And, and Memorial Park Association is probably a great example of them. And, and Memorial Park Association is probably a great example of that because, you know, they work closely with the city of Jacksonville to keep our, our one riverfront park, the Memorial Park, looking good and, and you know, it's, it's really a beloved park. So when we come back to our vision, which is a riverfront for all, a network of parks, green spaces and trails, including cultural places that provide public access to our riverfront. There's so many opportunities and connecting the South Bank and the surrounding areas. When we implement the vision, we need broad community support. We have found amazing amount of support so far. We are working on political. We have also been working towards the city leaders in many different areas, from the business community to the downtown areas. We really welcome your input on this, but to access and to create an, an open dialogue. Because what we feel like is that we all need to be invested in this and we, we shouldn't settle for, again, just, well, let's do a small piece here and a small piece there because you might just miss the opportunity and a connection, and a commitment to excellence. So we are really looking forward to hearing from you and to, to hear your questions, answer your questions and hear any suggestions that you have on a, on a going-forward basis. Our, our, you know, our approach is to really work, try to be connected with the decision-making of the Downtown Investment Authority, since they are very critical from a leadership perspect, perspective. So we are, we were able to present to them in September and we look forward to that, that dial, you know, furthering that dialogue as well. So with that, I'm gonna, you know, turn it back over to the facilitator and so we can answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Wow. One, I just want to be outside in all of those beautiful parks. They're just, they are breathtaking and it's very relaxing and very nice. Because a lot of those places, you know, you can see Jacksonville, you can 1,000% see Jacksonville in those, in those pictures. It's just, it's, it's, it's amazing. We have quite a few questions and we're shorter on time. So what will probably end up happening is I'm going to ask a couple of questions and then Nancy, if you don't mind, I'm going to send the questions to you. And if I, you know, whenever you have a moment, I know, I'm sure you're really, really busy. But whenever you have a moment, if you can just, or we can get on the phone and I can get the answers from you that way. But if, because some of these are, will take more than a minute to respond to. And there's some really good questions in the chat. Quickly, so next, actually, our next, in two weeks, we have the Director of Parks speaking. Darryl Joseph is actually our speaker in two weeks. And so it, I, you know, out of curiosity, I mean, I know that you mentioned that you have presented to DIA. Clearly, this is public land. So like the Parks Department, City of Jacksonville in general, you know, have, what's your, like, what's your conversation that you're having with them right now?
Yeah, we were able to present to Darryl and Jill maybe three or four weeks ago. So, and, and one of the members of our, our steering committee is Barbara Goodman, who is the former superintendent of the Tim McQuann Parks Foundation. So we, they were, they are supportive of it. You know, right now, they have, you know, certain areas are not considered parkland, right? So they, they don't have the purview over anything that's not parkland designated. And so, but they, they are supportive of it and we are continuing our conversations with them.
Okay. Then we talked about DIA. Someone asked, you, you spoke a little bit about, you know, the different organizations. And there's some people who've come in the chat saying that they also are organizations that are supporting y'all. What are ways that any of us privately or publicly can help? I mean, I know you said that you're interested in input. Are you going to be hosting, you know, kind of like community forums? Is it like, do we just reach out to you directly via email? Like, how do we get involved?
Well, we do have a small website that we are hoping to build out a little bit more. It's called riverfrontparksnow.org. There is a mailing list, so you can sign up for the mailing list. You could also do it on any of our, our individual nonprofit websites as well. So we have a, we are going to try to keep in, you know, we are going to send out regular updates to those audiences. You can also choose to introduce us to organizations that you think that would be good for us to present to. And one of the, and participating in the DIA public opportunities is going to, is really important. When we presented, we had 50 people on the, this was a committee meeting. And the DIA, we go to a lot of DIA meetings there. If anybody who goes to them realizes there's not that many people other than, you know, the staff and developers that, that usually go to those. So we feel like they need to hear from us and really what, what does the public want here? So it's an, it's an opportunity. They, they are in the process of, of hiring a consultant to update their business plan. And so we expect to hear about that very soon. And that process will have some public opportunities to, to do inputs. They are doing a master parks plan as part of that. And so we hope to influence that in a positive way. And then, so those are, those are the opportunities right now. We have talked about doing our own community input process and we, we are going to try to build out our, our website and, and also do that, like to find out what do people want to see in their parks? Because obviously we want, we see this as a, you know, as a something that can be done 365 days a year. Like you wouldn't build Metropolitan Park the same way you built it.
Right, right.
So what do people here want to see in their? If, if we were to be able to have, you know, dedicated public space on the riverfront, what would people want to see here? To make it uniquely Jacksonville, you know, we, we don't want to just cookie cutter somebody else's, even though there's so many creative opportunities.
Sure. Well, and to that, and this will probably be the last question, but are you concerned, right? There's been, there's been other organizations and there's been people and there's been private builders and, you know, everyone has an idea, right? Are you concerned at all? And to that, kind of what makes this different? And, and I will tell you, very, very, when I started reading all about the project, I did say, and I even told Tom this, that out of all the projects that I've seen over the last decade or so, this one actually feels like it's got some clout. I mean, I, I get the same vibe similar to what Kay's doing, you know, with groundwork checks. Like, it's like this one could actually move forward. So, but are you concerned and what can we do for the, the naysayers and those that are like, oh, this is just another project? It's not going to go anywhere. What can we do?
Can I take that, Nancy?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things we really recognize is this is slipping the script on how we've done it before. I mean, you know, we looked back and we looked at, we've been trying to develop the riverfront for 30-plus years downtown with no success, frankly. And a lot of that's been based on trying to provide subsidies, incentives for private development and also allowing private development to determine what the vision is for the future primarily. This is actually saying, hey, we own it. The, the public owns.
Public owns it, right.
Let's make sure the public has a say in what happens and let's prioritize public access along the waterfront, which can then support private development adjacent to it. And we've seen this. I think that's the thing about this is we've looked and there are models throughout the country. There's a recipe for success that's been replicated time and time again in these other cities. They don't all do it the exact same way, but there's a lot of the same, same criteria that's been used, public input, all of that. That's been really successful and it's also proven economic development strategy. I mean, you look at on our website, we have a document about the economic return on investment from these parks. And it is really impressive of how parks can actually be catalysts for development, attracting businesses, attracting residents. And so I think it's something that's just, it's time to try a new approach. And we feel like this has been proven in other cities and could be replicated here.
Nice. Okay. I like that. I just, it definitely, you know, and, and we talk about this almost every council meeting now. We want to be involved and we want to, you know, find a way to give back and to actually move forward with our particular, you know, improving downtown because without a downtown, without a strong core, then it's great that we have all these suburbs, but ultimately it's just a bunch of people, right? So this particular project in general, I mean, we clearly as Downtown Council, we meet downtown. We are very involved in as many downtown projects as possible. And we try and we strive very hard to bring people into downtown. It's nice, Council, Downtown Council doesn't, it's not only people in downtown. We're not a neighborhood council like some of the other councils. So it's nice to be able to kind of branch out and give this information to as many people as possible. With that, because it is I-04 and we are always very big on time management. It's cute that it's I-04 Jacksonville. Anyway, we are, I'm going to Nancy, Jimmy, and then Tom also. I'm going to take the questions and send them to you guys. And, because some of them are some pretty strong questions and I think that they, they're, you would have great answers for them. So I will do that by end of day-to-day. And I'm going to pass it back over to Gracie so that she can send us on our way for this lovely Friday.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Laura. Wow. Incredible presentation. The chat was just full of so much excitement about many of the photos you showed, the potential for riverfront activation. So thank you, Tom, again, for recommending that Nancy and Jimmy come speak with us. We are just thrilled to have, you know, you here to share more about this campaign. A couple of brief things I want to mention and then we will be done for the day. One, I want to give a big shout out to our new 2021 Small Business Leader of the Year for Downtown Council, Mr. Jim Webb of Manifest Distilling. Congratulations. Very excited for you to have him. And the other thing is, and Laura sort of alluded to this, our next meeting is in two weeks. It'll be via Zoom. It'll be from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. also on a Friday morning. And that is with Darryl Joseph, who's the Director of Parks, Recreation and Community Services. He's going to speak with us about Florida, Georgia this year and how things are looking, what is happening and be available for questions and answers. So hope you're able to join us for that meeting. That'll be very interesting. Thank you, Laura, for setting that one up for us. Other than that, that's all I have for you. I hope you have a wonderful, safe weekend and we look forward to seeing you next time.